It was on. Good evening, I will now call this meeting to order. Our first order of business is to adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting. Commissioners, is there a motion to adopt the final agenda?
Move to adopt final agenda.
Second that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Pedersen, second by Commissioner Sikora. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, the motion carries. Our next order of business is to adopt the minutes from the November eighth, two thousand twenty-three Planning Commission meeting. Commissioners, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes of December, or November eighth.
Second?
Second.
Yeah, Commissioner, or motion made by Commissioner Resias, second by Commissioner Pedersen. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, the motion carries. We'll now move on to our discussion items tonight. Our first item for discussion and action tonight is item three point one, consider a comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning for seventy-five hundred Victoria Drive. This item does include a public hearing. I will now turn it over to City Planner Brian McCain for a staff presentation, and then I will open the public hearing for those in the chambers this evening that wish to speak on this request.
Thank you Chairman Commissioners. Yes, tonight we have a comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning request from seventy-five hundred Victoria Drive. So of the two requests this evening, a comprehensive plan amendment, which you're all aware of, is changing the future land use designation of a property in the city's twenty forty comprehensive plan. And the rezoning is changing the current land use designation of the property on the city's zoning. So a little information about the property. It's currently a vacant parcel, it's just over two and a half acres in size. It's zoned R three multifamily housing and guided for parks. The reason for this is because there is an inholding park status with Three Rivers Park District for future parkland for the Three Rivers Park area. It's also adjacent to County Road eleven and the Humanity Alliance, which is also owned by the applicants who are in attendance tonight. It's also near Auburn Lake, so it is within our Shoreland overlay district. So the rezoning component of their application, as I mentioned, it's currently zoned R three multifamily residential. They would like to change this to a R one low-density zoning designation because they would like to construct a single-family home on the property. They are proposing to extend or connect to the utilities. They will utilize well-inseptic until utilities are available toward the property. And then just a quick correction, the ordinance in your package tonight had rezoning from parks to R one residential. It's actually rezoning from R three residential to R one. And then a similar situation for the comprehensive plan amendment. It's guided parks, but they want to re-guide it to low-density residential to accommodate that single-family home. Now, the city council can authorize the comp plan amendment, but as we all know, it has to go to the Metropolitan Council for the final decision. They really should not have a lot to say in the decision because they aren't extending stewards, so they wouldn't be able to withhold any sort of steward extension request because there isn't one being proposed. As I mentioned, they're proposing a single-family home for the property. Here are just a few architectural renderings to give you some examples of the type of construction that would go out there, as well as some project details about the garage, the square footage, what type of foundation, the number of bedrooms and stories, and then also just a general location on the property of where they're proposing to place it. As I mentioned before, it has the inholding status with Three Rivers Parks in their master plan, and it has the park status in our comprehensive plan. So for the Three Rivers side, it has to be released from the inholding status from their master plan. That process takes a little time, but we've been working with the Metropolitan Council, and they're working with Three Rivers to get this out of inholding status, which Three Rivers has already commented to the city saying that they have no issue with releasing this inholding for the proposed. And then the comprehensive plan amendment process, as I mentioned, the city council will authorize for some middle that's being brought to them on January twenty-second. And then we have to do an adjacent jurisdiction notification to Three Rivers and Carver County because it's adjacent to their highway, and then Three Rivers because of the inholding status. Then they have to remove the status from their master plan, which can coincide approximately at the same time as the adjacent jurisdiction or beyond our end. And then the Met Council has their administrative review, so another fifteen days. So realistically, we're talking late March possibly for final approval and everything is set up. So tonight, we advertised for a public hearing. On December seventh, we noticed for this hearing we would monitor in the lobby at City Hall. We also posted it on the city's public notices webpage. It was posted in the Chatham Pass and Villager, and it was also mailed to property owners within three hundred and fifty feet of the property's boundaries. So staff's recommendation this evening is to hold a public hearing on their request and recommend the city council approve the rezoning against the middle of a comprehensive plan amendment. And I have a sample motion for you on the screen tonight, which also addresses that revision to the ordinance. And the app is in the audience, so staff and applicants can stand for any questions you have.
Thank you. I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the chambers this evening who wish to comment on this item? Seeing no one here tonight in hearing, we, can I get a motion to close the public hearing? Second?
Well, second.
Yeah, motion made by Commissioner Murray, second by Commissioner Sikora. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, the motion carries and the public hearing is closed. I will now open the floor for the Planning Commission to discuss. Commissioners, are there any questions for the property owners or staff?
To me, this feels like the first step in a few. Are we, when I say we, that means everyone involved, I guess, aware of the Shoreland ordinances and other operational things that are gonna have to happen in order for that to, a house to be built there? Or residents to be built there? I mean, we can go through all this, and then all of a sudden, it's like, we wanna put our domicile here, and it's a hundred feet too close to where it should be. So are we aware of that information? It doesn't make sense to go through all of this if it's not gonna happen otherwise. Would be the only thing that came up in my head.
Sure, Commissioner Pedersen, to address your question, this has been covered with the applicant already. There's a one-hundred-foot distance requirement from Auburn Lake, and as you can see on the screen here, the closest portion is over three hundred.
Alright. My bad.
No, 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 round it off.
You didn't walk it off?
I didn't walk it off. I drove past it. Are the future homeowners aware that it's a church and like, I guess I'd call it a rehabilitation facility perhaps? That would be the two neighbors?
Yes, people are aware.
Okay.
People are aware that they are actually the owners.
I was gonna say, I think you're here before for that, but I just, I don't wanna make any assumptions.
I have a question for staff. The comp plan, having this as multifamily, and the proximity to downtown, and the future growth of downtown, was the comp plan designated as higher density because of the proximity to downtown? I maybe missed it, you probably covered it.
Sure. So that's, it's kinda confusing. We're working with low-density, high-density, and parks. So our current zoning has it for R three that high-density, but in our comp plan, it's guided for parks. So changing parks to low-density actually increases our density calculations? It's just our current zoning that shows it as high-density. So changing that doesn't alter our comp plan at all?
Got it. And it was designated as parks because it wasn't owned by the current owners when it was, the comp plan was made?
Or was it owned by you? No, that's still a mystery. Okay.
So how long have you owned this parcel? The comp plan was done in twenty eighteen.
Did you know it was zoned for parks when you bought it?
We thought it was zoned for R three.
R three.
Correct. Zoned for R three.
It was zoned for R three. In the comp plan.
Guided in the comp.
Guided. Through the comp plan for parks. Which, why the comp plan guided it for parks if it was zoned R three is kinda crazy. Especially if it's an individual parcel that was out there. So I don't understand.
I wasn't on the comp.
If the ownership was the same across the board, and R three is the designation for the facility, they may have thought that facility would expand, and therefore would want to have it guided for that expansion, is what I would think of.
But it was guided for parks.
But, I mean guided, well, actually, zoned for R three.
R three.
For some clarity, in our twenty thirty plan, this was guided for parks as well, and that's because of the Three Rivers inholding status. We were aware of this potentially being future parkland in the future as their master plan designated. So we likely just followed suit because we had to. I'm guessing this has always been zoned R three, but this comp plan has always said parks because that's always been Three Rivers plan.
I personally think putting a single residential property there is a nice buffer between the homes that go to the northwest, or northeast, I guess, or northwest, than to have, you know, I think there could be, probably be a little bit more emotions around having another, like, high-density development there. So I actually think it's a good marriage between the plots.
Are you, Greg, are you looking to connect the two properties in the future, or not?
No, we keep them separate.
Okay.
How do you even tell you more about that? It's nice to have a little separation between Greg and Heidi, if you want. You can go up to the podium and just have your name and address. Sure, Greg, for the seventy-six hundred Victoria Drive. No, we'll have a little buffer between the Humanity Alliance and our home.
Okay. I know you were, at one time, looking to expand Humanity Alliance for...
We thought there'd be some great partnership opportunities with that piece of property. Most of what we do is supportive housing, but we like to use the empties. So in this case, this building was sitting empty for three years. We're able to get in there quick. So our plans to build anything as a huge block, not property, is just to do.
Okay. Alright.
Yeah, the sewer and water make it pretty difficult to do it.
Okay.
What's the, so Three Rivers Park owns all the land outside of all these borders, right?
Mm-hmm.
Correct. As you can see on the screen, it's a pretty significant area.
And west.
Yeah, I mean, it's a good parcel for a house.
This might be off-topic a little bit, but does the, do the church and the Humanity Alliance receive city water? Are they on the tube or not?
There's no public utilities out there. Yet. Because that's the problem with even going to the, uh... Because even going to the new development.
It's alright. Thank you.
Down by Dairy Queen?
Yeah.
That's all, that just got connected here with that whole development going in.
I didn't know for sure.
So that's as far as the water goes, is to...
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a pretty significant distance along Highway eleven that they would have to extend utilities just for a single home. Or if they did decide to develop it with, say, like, townhomes or something, you still probably couldn't get more than eight units in there.
I don't know. I didn't have any other issues with it, other than you have to go through all the hoops, and I think what they bring to the community is a positive thing, and building a house next door sounds like a good thing for, for them.
So will we see a site plan or anything on this, or not?
No. This would be the only time.
Okay.
Is there any thought to adding additional homes, or would it just be the one single-family home?
Right now, one single-family, I think the utilities for drive probably all of that, right? And the courts on the county level, the run that is in the multi-mile, so it's a decent pretty big one.
Friends' views?
This running view.
Well, if nothing else, you guys want me to recommend to the city council that they approve the requested rezoning from R three to R one residential and a comprehensive plan amendment for seventy-five hundred Victoria Drive?
I'll second it.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Pedersen, second by Commissioner Sikora. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, the motion carries. Our second item tonight for discussion is item three point two for a mural at seventy-nine seventy-four Victoria Drive. I will now turn it over to Community and Economic Director Jen Bruington for an overview of the mural.
Thank you Chairman Commissioners. So tonight, this item is just a discussion item. So we are going to be talking about a mural. So in September of twenty twenty-three, the city welcomed the doggy boutique downtown Victoria. Just for reference point, it is right next to the post office, so it'll come in and in. Feel free to check it out, it's very cute. The mural, which is on your screen here in this photo, was created by two local residents, Luke and Sam Sayer, ages thirteen-eleven. In fact, Luke actually won a Google Artist Award as a sixth grader, so a pretty big deal with the community. And the reason why we're bringing this up is because according to our zoning code section twenty-one dash twenty-five, it designates murals as a sign. So with that, that means that the Planning Commission is requesting to repeat murals. We're just waiting for a discussion on the mural and how we're feeling about murals in the city in general, and how you wanna proceed with the mural that the applicant has applied for. Even though the mural is up, she is going through the process of going through a pre-application process right now. So that is all I have for my presentation. I will turn it over to you, Commissioner, and Chair.
Thank you Jen. Commissioners, uh... Do you have any questions for staff?
Is there an actual picture of it on the building? This is the actual photo of it. It's about ten by ten.
I was wondering.
Just for reference, though. Cause I haven't really done the backside.
It's on the backside, from Floyd's.
I was gonna say, that's what happens when you jump.
What is our, do we have a, uh, this is gonna sound insulting to this great piece of art, but it's not. Do we have a graffiti ordinance?
And this is the first mural in the community, so this is why we're bringing it to you. The applicant is listening from home, she couldn't make it today, but she's very excited about it, and we do promote and like other art in the community, so we just wanted to get feedback from her mural tonight, and we're assuming we'll see more in the community down the road. But again, it's designated as a sign, so if you can go through that process, so that would be...
I just maybe like to recommend we do have a formal ordinance against graffiti, and that an approved sign or work of art that is a mural is not graffiti, and, uh, and that way we can maybe...
I also wonder if we weren't going under just the signage process without the mural, what would be the actual size limitations of that signage? Cause that seems like it might differ.
Sure. So, I have a question because I am not entirely familiar with our wall signage requirements. I would guess it's based on a certain amount of the breadth aside of the building. So if you drive by and look at this off of Rose Street, it's, it's not as big as you might think it is based on this picture. I'm sure it would meet our wall signage requirements, but we haven't gotten that in depth because we are considering this a mural, an advertising mural per se, and so there aren't any specific standards listed with that in our sign code. So I just have a few more questions.
I just wonder, cause it does kind of set precedence, and I think we have to be careful with that because the look and feel of downtown is kind of part of that, and if everyone wanted to put a ten-by-ten mural that was painted, maybe it's cool, I don't know, but you, you might want some kind of orders around that.
Yeah, I would just, I would maybe recommend, everybody else give your feedback, but I would recommend maybe a small, uh, plaque at the bottom or something designating who the artist was, why, you know, that it got a Google award or something, and that it's not, when somebody would walk by, they'd recognize it as the sign, and something special.
Is there any need to, out of the, that's what it works?
Is there anything to consider that is advertising a company and a work of art? Having that as, you don't know?
That is one, one thing that we've talked about internally at staff is how do you prefer us moving forward with that? Do you, I mean, do you allow signage that has a specific business? Or is it just, for example, if the, the name wasn't there, it was just the paw, is that acceptable? So to your point, I, I don't know that we have that figured out yet.
I kind of feel like if you're gonna put the name of a store on a mural, it then becomes not a mural, but a sign. And I think that if, if that is the case, that we might wanna look at the signage requirements for that business in alignment. Because otherwise, it does open up the window that anyone, I mean, Floyd's could make a great big banner on the side of their building, as could everyone else, and I don't know, you know, like I said, I don't know if that's good or bad, but I think that that's our role is to provide the bumpers.
And I guess I would look at it as, we'd prefer to see it beforehand.
Yes.
An artist's rendering or something versus it just going up and then ask for permission or forgiveness. And, uh, because otherwise, I mean, I could see, you know, the metal wall by Victoria Flats getting painted and nobody having a discussion about what is going on. And I guess that's, I mean, typically even with a sign, they do a, you know, signage rendering or...
Yes, city staff currently internally processes the sign permits.
Right.
This is something that we felt was a little bit different than typical sign permits, correct? So we just wanna make sure that you got your feedback and council's feedback as well. But we do typically would see it beforehand, uh, but whether the building owner did get permission or the business owner to put that up.
Okay.
So if no one complained, how to get to you guys? Did I just interrupt you?
No, go ahead.
The council had requested that it go through the formal process, just in case we do start seeing more murals. I mean, to your point, the chairman, he wanted to make sure that we, that we really figured out. He can use me to approach or someone else in the future.
I just think at the west side of the Hartman Building, when you look at the west side of the White Birch House and Elliot, or whatever June, whatever the, Willow June, and those are very classy, very, you know, nice building. And then you go over and, and you have this, which is more, like, a really differentiation. And I would see that maybe the issue might come from them, like saying, wait a minute, they have a whole entire front-facing advertisement to Highway five to anyone driving, which is not really the purpose of a sign or a mural, I don't think. So it's a little difficult. I mean, advocate, it's kind of interesting, but I do think that it's hard with the name of the business.
So a council person saw it and said, we should get this approved through the commission, the city, and the city council, and went to the business owner and said, you need to get this approved. Okay. Just wanna make sure I figured out how we got to this point.
I wish I could see a picture of it, not this close up, but actually in, I need to drive there.
Need to drive.
Because it's hard for me to really understand. Ten to me sounds ten, I mean, it's like two of us each way, which seems like a really big mural.
Um, I guess if you look at that wall.
That wall is three, I mean, that's like ten, two of them. That might be ten to ten, two panels.
That could be.
Probably eight by ten, yeah.
Yeah.
Need a, give me a moment here, I can pull up Google Maps to show you the backside.
That'd be really good. Cause I had, I had no idea this was here.
So how do the other business owners feel about it? Do we know?
Well, the post office probably.
They don't care if we go down?
I don't know.
Floyd's, and then there's a dental office there.
There's, there's the post office, them, and then the dentist office.
It's less about the...
It's right there, yeah.
...composition to the, the actual sign as it is. If we, if this is fine, then what's to stop other people from creating murals? Murals everywhere. Or not, not even just murals, but those promoting specifically. Do you want advertisements as art? That's one thing to consider. So for...
I mean, would we...
No, I mean, that's a, for perspective, uh, here's the portion of the building, that's the post office, and then here's the doggy, and this is the wall where the mural is.
So they rent that space? So the agreement was that they would put it back to its original state, and they no longer rent this space, I would assume? Which then would make it fall into the signage category. Because that's how signage works. works. Otherwise, it would have been a donation to the building of the art and time, which would have been different and wouldn't have had any advertising on it. So it is crossing the line of the two, I think.
Correct. If it would have been, let's just say a flower or a leaf to Victoria, that could have been a little bit different if you weren't media branding and more public art, but this actually has a specific name attached to it. So that's where I think the red flag went off, like, okay, hold on, this is a sign. What do we do about this? So looking at our, our code section, we, we realized that we didn't know how to deal with murals, so this is the first.
Uh. Feel any better if you took off the Doggy Boutique and just left the paw print on there?
I guess the.
It would be more a mural.
Then be a mural.
I guess the question would be if their logo was this and, um, their sign looked like this, where would the zoning code allow them to put that? Would they allow them to put it across the entire back of the, of the building? I mean, I think if you look on the other side in your Google Maps, I could see, uh, across the street of the borough, for example, signage on the borough is on the front of the borough, right? It's not along the side of the building in giant letters. Maybe we'd allow that, maybe we wouldn't.
The borough actually did create a signed building. It does have Victoria Borough and all three of that, but it has no art. And that is, I think they did get resigning permits to do that.
Yeah.
Prior.
Right.
The other buildings have the names of their companies on the back of the building. So we're getting down to, okay, this is fine if you take and paint over the Doggy Boutique and then put up a lit sign that's, you know, fits within the rest of the architecture? I don't know. That's goofy too.
You know, that's where it's tough. If it was a sign, it would go into the sign permitting. If it was a mural, we don't have any rules for that, we should probably create them.
So you look at the Prince mural over in Chan, right? That's a mural.
Right.
And that probably had formal approval to be a mural, not a sign.
Right.
Not advertising any thing really, but our culture.
Although if they came to us and wanted to double sign that building with the front and the back, we would allow signage, but what would that sign? That's why I say, what are the size limitations? Cause I feel like it's, there is none, like, most of it's happening.
Yes, there, there are, I'm looking them up right now.
And she is going to be applying for an actual sign for the front of her building. Okay. So she's going to be with staff right now, but she's not doing that to probably spring.
It is hard to, I mean, they're expensive at the time.
And if you've noticed in Victoria, we have a lot of unique signage. It's not good with each other, it conforms to neighboring signs. And I think that's something that we like, is that a business can put up a unique sign, notice, need to the business within reason, right? Within unquote.
I think it's different for each building too. I mean, you've got the new buildings to the north and you've got the post office, dentist office and this place, which is, I don't know, nineteen sixties building and then it's smaller and it's set back in that little alcove. And then you have Floyd's next to it. Floyd's has plastic banners that are up all the time that some people may consider to be informative, other things might feel there, trash bags on the side of the walls. I kinda don't care one way or the other. But I think you're also diving into a slippery slope when you start dictating what business owners can put on the sides of their walls.
I, I think that one of the concerns to probably process is, um, if it's a rented building and a new business and the success of that building is, or a business is yet to be known or how long they might be there, is there something in the lease that requires them to take it off when they leave? Otherwise, we have a building being advertised or a business being advertised possibly without an actual business there and people coming through and going, there's a signage for a dog place, there's no dog place. And then, you know, that's not ideal.
Lots of companies go out of business and leave their signs.
Actually, most sign, most signage has to be down when people leave. That's what I'm getting to. If it's a sign, I've had to do signage for multiple developments and they have to be taken down as you leave.
You're in commercial real estate, I'm just taking, I'm just taking, I'm just taking a guess, thinking back to like companies have gone out of business, they're like, that sign's still up, isn't it?
If it's a one where to go ahead and paint over, you're not talking about a lot of dollars.
Right, paint over it, you just.
Little primer, little paint, little.
Right. But if it's a mural and it's pop art and it's.
White key on a spray paint.
You know, recognize, you wouldn't really, you'd wanna maintain it if it's a mural we wanna keep.
All very helpful, thank you for the feedback. We are gonna be doing some discussion internally here on signs in general, so we'll probably bring something back to the new year. We do have some work to clean up to do on our to-do list, including murals. So we appreciate your other comments tonight. We will relay the information to the business owner as well.
Great. Thank you. Moving on to our miscellaneous section of our agenda. Staff, do you have anything else to bring forward?
Only thing that I have is we are still planning on holding our January second meeting. Some of you have responded already saying you're able to make it, so if you're unable to make it, please let us know as soon as possible. We're still planning.
Commissioners, do you have any comments or bring to body this evening? Hearing done, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
A second?
I'll second.
Yeah, motion made by Commissioner Rosia, second by Commissioner Sikora. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. The motion carries, we are adjourned. Have a great evening, have a merry.